Forty-seven, since we have a quorum. Hopefully, maybe Chris will come later.
No, evidently Michelle is not coming.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I hate to proceed because we got so much done last time without them. I'm wondering, you know.
It's entirely up to you board members whether we proceed or do you wanna punt it?
How do you feel about that?
I would probably say after the holidays.
Right.
I mean, this time of the season, you know, it just people's board just gets busy.
Right. Right.
I don't know, I, I mean. Look at this stuff, but they're just gonna ask questions about it themselves afterwards, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I would think.
It's entirely up to the two of you.
Yeah, if you don't wanna have this meeting and you'd rather more people, then that's where we'll end it.
I mean, the, one of the, there's no action on the agenda, so there's no votes, you're not deciding anything.
Right, right.
Right, right.
No.
No, it's just a matter of we talk about it and then we go back and answer it.
Right.
They're.
Talk about it. It is being recorded, so they could watch it, so if you wanna proceed, but it's entirely, I'm not trying to force your hand.
Okay. Alright. Okay. Alright, why don't we proceed?
Okay.
And we will start with pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
And Deb, did you, the minutes are in there. If you wanna take a quick look at them and see if they, I will move to approve them. I didn't see any discrepancies and.
I accept that.
And all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Alright, new business, we will discuss the follow-up questions and information from December second for the ad hoc class size assessment committee meeting. And Tom has provided us with historical data on class size.
And I will say Craig was instrumental in pulling much of this data together, so I'll share the credit there.
Sure.
But one of the questions, follow-up questions was what are some, what is some elementary historical class size data minimally for the last ten years? You know, this is pre-K, obviously, we didn't start our own pre-K until twenty seventeen.
Right.
So I'll kinda breeze through that, but you can, you know, so from a K perspective, Craig, one more time while the cameras are rolling, we went to from five elementaries to three. Completed around what year?
Yeah. Completed.
You know, the third one being done officially five to three.
When they were in the, yeah.
Yeah, I think that was great, now if in two thousand and eleven, if memory serves, and if I'm off by a year, it would just be bad.
Yep. So this column, the right-hand column really gives you a sense of when we, you know.
Right.
As three elementaries, and you can see there's some ebbs and flows, and we talked about that last time with the challenges with three neighborhood elementaries. You know, grade one similarly, you know, you can see hover twenties, nineteenth, couple of years of twenty threes.
And in grade one, twenty threes? Yeah. Might be a high number. So, but that's the range.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's important that, you know, across the district, we had some grade ones of seventeen and at least one of twenty-three. At grade two, you can see over the last decade, twenty-ones, seventeens, nineteenth, twenties, twenty-two's.
But the numbers aren't that different from what they were previously with three schools versus five schools.
Yep.
They're pretty consistent.
And not different than what the board has gotten in past budget cycles as recent as this current fiscal year? And will be building the same?
Right.
Grade four, you can see.
Yeah.
Seven's low from, you know, twenty-four, but mainly low twenties as the high end of the range, but some sixteens, eighteens, fifteens.
Yeah. And, and the teacher information, the Watford High School, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead.
No, that's okay. And then there was a question around the number of teachers in each subject area at Waterford High and for the general public who may be listening or watching at a later date, this is in our budget book. But this breaks it down by core academics, and you can see over the last decade, it has dropped from about fifty-one core academic teachers to about forty-five. But the other areas are relatively flat with the exception of special ed, as our special ed population has increased over the last decade. So has our staff in that area, and the total teachers slightly down from a decade, but you can see up a little bit in the last couple of years. The jump from last year to this year was really around tech ed slash art, and then some additional staffing to support the implementation of capstone.
When does that go into effect?
It is this year's junior class who are working on their projects right, literally right now.
Okay. Okay.
Probably some literally right now.
For the graduating class of twenty-three, which would be this year's juniors.
Gotcha.
The questions that we are still working on, just for your information, class sizes of non-core classes at Clark Lane, that's still in progress.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll get that to you at the next meeting, if not before. There was a question asked, for each section at the high school, would it be possible to break down freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors in each section? And that, that's really not a report that we have readily available.
Right.
If we can figure out a way to do it, we'll do it, but it's really not a report that's readily available. And it's kinda.
We'll work around the back Power School, but.
We don't use Power School, I know how to do it in Anthony campus. This is, there are reports by grade line.
Yeah.
We are one of five schools in the state that use Anthony campus.
There you go, and then the last one is a longer-term project, and the question was, as we face declining enrollment, what middle school models exist out there besides teams or modified teams? Because we will be faced, as we talked about last week.
Right.
I could bring up just some of our middle school.
But that wouldn't be an immediate concern for FY twenty-three at all.
Yeah, that's a.
No, no, but, but it's nice to start thinking about it now.
But you can see.
Correct.
As we move from classes approaching two hundred to classes in the one-fifties and one-sixties, you know, probably three to four years down the road. Those are the types of discussions and research we will have to have completed by that time.
Right, and I think the transparency is really important to get everybody involved in the citizenry to understand what we're dealing with is really important. I think that helps everyone understand where we're going, and if we, in what direction we should be going. So we can go on, we'll wait for those three questions to be answered at our next meeting possibly?
Yeah, the middle school model one is probably a ways off, but certainly class sizes of electives at slash UAs at Clark Lane.
Okay. Yeah.
And if we can figure out a report to run, you know, the freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors in each section, we will, if we can figure it out, we'll have it at the next meeting.
Right. Okay.
And maybe contacting Power School saying, how do we actually run that?
Okay. And then, so we can go on to our discussion of crap, class offerings at Waterford High School Public School, which is the, of course, the booklet on our.
Program of studies.
Program of studies, thank you.
For the high school.
For the high school.
Craig, you wanna maybe walk us through?
Yeah, so first, for elementary, so in your packet, you'll see that, you know, the elementary and the middle school were taken right out of the student handbooks. So elementary has basically art, music, TV, and library as, as specials. Computers were, was a, you know, a special for kids, not for teachers, 'cause a teacher was in the room with the para with one-to-one. We're, we're not really using the computer labs as much since we have the technology in the classroom, so we're really, as we spoke about transitioning, what does that look like in the future? And then, you know, you get to see what general music is about, and then when you talk about electives for elementary, so some kids take, some kids don't. That would be the opportunity for chorus.
Music, yeah.
Starting in fourth grade, orchestra starting with violins in third grade, and band started also in third grade. And then we scroll. Then we move to the middle school, and when we say what's their specials, then the nomenclature changes to unified arts.
Right.
And so sixth grade gets tech ed, art. Seventh grade gets health, and then they can choose two, two of the choices up here. And eighth grade is wellness and then a choice. And for PE, everyone gets it each year. For music, it's a sixth grade elective to take general music, and it's for kids who choose not to take band chorus or orchestra.
Gotcha.
So they will have a musical experience in sixth grade. If they don't take that type of elective, they'll take general music. And the goal is to, again, make sure we're not disenfranchising students at the elementary level who have done band and orchestra
Expose them to, yeah.
And might drop that because they wanna take something else, and we're saying in sixth grade, no, keep, keep that going. Continue the band program and the orchestra program, and that will be in lieu of like the general music, because if you know how to read music, you can certainly sing along.
Yeah. Okay. And at, and at the, at Clark Lane, all the unified arts are strictly grade by grade level, so we don't have to worry about that.
Correct, there wouldn't be sixth and seventh and eighth in the, in the same.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, middle school runs more like an elementary schedule by clustering grade level of kids in, through unified arts sections, they would give trimester opportunities.
Right.
The two relevant documents, the high school, obviously, is the program of studies, but also the high school graduation requirements, because that has a sizable impact on what we offer as a school district at the high school. We know as the last class, well, actually, yeah, the last class under the old graduation credit requirements will graduate in June, class of twenty-twenty-two. Everybody starting with this year's juniors and forward fall under the new graduation requirements. And Craig, that was mainly a result of federal, state legislation?
State legislation.
Yeah. Yep, but our requirements do go above that.
Right.
They do?
Yes.
And that is a consistent practice that we've always, in my memory, at least two and a half decades here, have always had at least a credit more required than what the state is, a credit or two. And this way of clustering humanities, STEM, health with a wellness uptick, wellness is new, and then a foreign language is new, and then capstone is new. So, so it has, you know, increased our graduation requirements from what was twenty-four to twenty-six.
Are kids having trouble finding their, all their, you know, being able to schedule their programs the way they want them in each year?
So I think it's fair to say that.
Ninety percent?
It, they, we can get them all scheduled, it just means that, that under the current schedule design, there might be less opportunities for kids than there were in the past.
Okay.
Because if we had twenty-four credits as a requirement and kids maybe could take, probably up to like thirty-two, like then there'd be more opportunity within the current design. Now with two additional credits, there's a little bit less, but it's, it's to say that we can certainly provide all of these opportunities for kids, but they just might not get as many of what they want as electives.
Gotcha.
Because of schedule and capacity within our schedule design.
So if they, if they can't get something that they're supposed to get in as a sophomore, do they then take it later on?
Well, these graduation requirements aren't grade level specific, as you will see pre-K to eight, they're graduation requirements.
Okay.
So they, they can get it anytime they need to, but certainly if we're talking about like English nine, meaning freshman.
Right. Gotcha, yeah, right, right.
We wanna make sure that all the freshmen get that requisite course, but if it's.
Right. More of the electives are.
An elective, if you don't get it this semester, could you get it next semester or potentially next year? Those are opportunities and options.
Okay.
With the increase in the number of total credits, have you seen any change in like numbers of study halls or, I'm just wondering if we're filling more classes because we have more credits required?
We're certainly filling more classes. When we talk about study hall, we have the support study halls called the link, where you have a teacher of content giving an opportunity for kids as an extra help model. And then you have like the larger study halls as just a student choice.
Right.
So we are filling more classes this way, but, you know, we, we have a comprehensive program of studies, so we, we don't, we don't run every single course in that course catalog as I don't think any school or university does in their program of studies, but we do run them, and Deb will know better than me probably as, as a principal, a high school principal in a different district. Like that you run it and you kinda see what the kids want this year, and that's what courses get to run.
What happens if you, you know, you say this is what you're offering for the next year and not enough kids sign up for it? What happens to that teacher? Does that teacher get assigned a different spot or?
Yeah, so generally speaking, and again, Deb, feel free if I'm off on just the process, but generally speaking, you, you, kids sign up several months beforehand.
Yep.
And then they'll know if their course is gonna run.
Before they pay.
They'll have in the signup, my first choice, my second choice, or my first to third choice, and if.
So they prioritize every single one of them, every single course?
Just their electives.
Yep, oh, okay.
'Cause if it's an assured experience like ninth grade English, like the kids might say, that's not my favorite choice, but it's a requirement, so when she says that's the electives, it's like, we know that's gonna have to be scheduled.
Right, right. I don't want to do English. Right.
But, you know, then it would go to your second choice, teachers are certified by content.
Okay.
So if this particular course within this particular department doesn't run, then the teacher will be assigned a different course in that same department for which they're certified.
Yep. Cap. Okay.
And that's usually, at least for us, based on what the kids choose.
Yeah, and how, how soon do you know before school starts?
So.
Or is it like?
I don't know, it depends.
Yeah.
Summer.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I mean, the, the budget has, there's a lot of things that have to happen before you can finalize what that's gonna look like.
Right.
Right, right. And then the teachers are pretty, because they're in a, in a content area, like they're able to diversify into either one course of the other.
Yeah, and it's usually courses, I mean, you know, when you have eight, ten members of a department, like you might have like, well, these teachers really like this core content course. These teachers like this content, and so, you know, you try to match the educator with their.
Favorites.
Interest within the department to the best of your ability as well, because then you know they're gonna be able to present and bring to life that course for the students.
Okay.
You also have certain teachers that are certified, like AP, there's training minutes to go with that, so some teachers that only teach certain classes.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Or are there teachers that might be really good at working with kids that need some extra attention?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And when it comes to those AP opportunities, we really do try to run those as we can, so that we don't disenfranchise any student that, that really is looking for those higher courses to get into, you know, their colleges.
Right, right.
And or pay for college, or not have to pay for college.
Right, right, because you've got credit for it, yeah.
When it comes to, yeah, yes, thank you.
Exactly, yep.
Yeah. Alright, I didn't have any other questions about that, did you Deb?
No.
Okay. So the other item was a discussion of ideas for future agenda items. And I suppose we need, my feeling is that we need to look not just for twenty-twenty-three, but for the future of what's gonna happen. And so these questions, especially the long-term, middle school model and everything perhaps can be addressed in the future, but I think that's basically where I'm coming from. But we need to start planning and get the word out now, whatever is happening with our budgets and our enrollments.
We, we do, and we include it in our budget book, but it might be determined to the next meeting, so we have, you know, we have the remaining follow-up questions. But I think we get enrollment projections every year from NESDEC, it's an organization we, you know, subscribe to, and part of their services are yearly enrollment projections. We can certainly share some data around that.
And, and the, just to add to what Tom's saying, and in the budget book, when it comes to the, the long range, the ten-year look, we use those NESDEC projections from NESDEC on that.
Do, do we? Gotcha.
When it's the next grade, I kinda move the grades up, try to balance the class sizes to meet the board guidelines, kind of the not too big, not too small. And then look at the NESDEC projections just to see kinda how on point, but there might be a slight discrepancy, and I will say the projections of the kids that we actually have moving them up a grade has been more accurate in the micro than the NESDECs.
Yeah, it's, yes.
Because, and you're only talking of maybe a delta of like twelve kids, but I might just do what we know, and that's been a little more accurate than the estimate projections.
Right. And, and then lower grades, it's always sort of a.
So on preschool, it's kinda, so in preschool, you'll see that we kinda default to class sizes of fifteen, because that's kinda the ideal.
Yeah, that's. Sure.
We'll, we'll know from the special ed director how many kids may be coming out of birth to three, how many kids are three going to be four.
Right.
And so we'll have that guesstimate.
Yeah.
And on kindergarten, we really have been just doing a three-year historical average of kindergarten per the schools.
Oh, okay.
And populating it that way because preschool is an assured experience. Some parents choose to keep their children at home at that time. Some parents choose to do different daycare options for which we don't always have access to the census data. So that has also worked in the aggregate pretty well as estimates.
Okay. Alright. Well, I, I don't proceed, I don't know if I have anything else, do you Deb? I, I suppose, do we know that the projections that we're doing for next year are all with that aggregate, aggregate that you just mentioned, that, that thing? But, but the lower grades were, were sticking pretty much with, for the elementary school, we're going with whatever happened before, the realistic numbers.
I will say that's what I've been doing for the past thirteen, fourteen years up here, and, and I, I, I will, I have looked at the NESDEC projections for, for that period of time.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna say it's worked well, the, the, the surprises have not been as high.
Eh, yeah.
Now, you know, are there some sort of micro surprises, sometimes where you might expect the district might get X number of kids in this grade level, and they all seem to wind up in one section of town? And, and that might have caused then a concern to bring to the board, should we split a section? Yes, those things happen, but you can't predict where people are gonna buy, you can't kind of predict that they might land.
No. And you guys have always been very good about at the last minute throwing in another class, as long as we can fit in it.
Yeah.
How are we doing on our recruitment of other high school students?
Yeah, it's, due to, I think due to the pandemic, it has not accelerated as fast as I would have expected in a pandemic.
Right.
So this is our third year of accepting students from Bosra, Franklin, and Norwich. To date, we have not received any students from Bosra or Franklin.
Wow.
But their entire eighth grade, I'm gonna say is somewhere between fifteen to twenty kids, so I mean, we're not talking at large.
Oh, wow.
They're very, very small K-eight schools in, up in the Norwich area. But in terms of Norwich, we had agreement for ten a year for three, I believe it was ten a year, I think it was ten year, ten year for three years.
It was ten.
Yeah.
Which would bring us to about expecting to have thirty Norwich students right now, that number's closer to about sixteen or seventeen, I believe, last count.
Okay.
Mainly.
Because of COVID.
What we, what we are seeing is the kids who started with us are staying with us, not all, but most, and I think that speaks volumes about that relationship.
Right. Right.
And I think the longer we have kids here and the more they talk about it, it's gonna be the right fit for other Norwich kids, and they'll hear from their friends and siblings and, hey, it was a good experience.
Right, right.
You know, Norwich has a very long history, successful relationship with NFA, so, but it's, it's another option, you know, and we. Uh, you know, Norwich has a very long history, successful relationship with NFA, so, but it's it's another option, uh, you know, and we spoke about that with the board, but it has not accelerated at the rate we would have expected by now.
Well, I, you know, COVID has really impacted all of that, I'm sure, but the other thing is, uh, we're sending a lot of kids to Grasso Tech and everything too, which is, you know, I understand if you want that experience, that's where you have to go, but wasn't it like twenty-one kids? I I don't have the number right from the.
Uh, it's right here, actually, it's, uh, this year it's forty-two, which is on the higher side, uh, for us historically speaking.
I can't see far. Uh-huh. Yeah, I I thought that that number.
Yeah, somewhere in the thirty range is typical, um, you know, but again, if you wanna go into a licensed trade.
Yeah. Sure, sure.
That's the place to get it.
Right, right.
And and I I think in COVID might be a factor in this, but I think kids are thinking that way a lot differently than they were a few years ago, so it's not really surprising.
Yeah.
No, finances matter, and if you can be, have a livable, happy, like, wage out of high school, then that's great.
Yeah. Yeah. Sure. They're very lucrative professions, so, um, alright, alright.
Certainly if the board thinks of any questions, um, between now and the next meeting, likely after the holiday break, just given the complexities between over the next week and a half.
Yeah. Not a problem.
Uh. You know, certainly forward them and say, hey, it'd be great to see this, can we prepare this, you know, we we're always here to support your needs.
Right.
But we will plan on the remaining follow-up questions as well as looking at some enrollment projections from NESDEC moving forward.
Okay.
What is our end game?
Well, uh, very first section at the beginning, the purpose and function of this subcommittee as articulated by the board, and and so have you, are you satisfied with with
Be good?
What's the just, you just look at?
the purpose and the functions and the information to date, I guess would be the questions.
Yeah.
You know, I think the information becomes relevant at budget time, as the board considers the budget around class sizes and course offerings.
Right.
Um. But, yeah, I mean.
But we we won't have next year's class sizes and course offerings for budget time, we're always looking back, right?
You will have a projection in the budget book in terms of number of teachers and projected class sizes, again, as you know, when we've added teachers in June, July and August, it it does fluctuate. But we will have as part of our budget presentation to the board, anticipated class sizes for next year.
For the middle school and high school too?
Yeah, so can you scroll down in in this package, just, and this is a bit education for the board, because.
Yes. Yeah, and and that's something we could do next time.
This document, yeah, scroll one down a little bit more, Tom.
Yeah.
Is it this document?
I think it is, Craig.
Okay. So this document, we would predict just like this in the budget book, and so you would see what the estimated class sizes then created by would be.
Right, you always have, yeah, you always have a page like that in.
And then.
We can prepare that for the next year as well.
And then, you know, we now know there's only one, uh, two teams rather, uh, for each grade at the middle school, so you basically then say, this number divided by two.
Yeah. Right.
And then divided by four gets you the class sizes, and we can break that out to that level, certainly for the board at that time. And then high school, uh, you have the number of teachers and you have the number of kids, and then it's really a balance on how everything can fit in the schedule, but, you know, are we looking at 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 that? We we are, I mean, cause questions have come up from either you or your colleagues on the board.
Sure.
Not to point people off, so, you know.
But it's a good, we can prepare thi- basically this same chart looking forward for next year for the next meeting.
No. That that would be very helpful, yeah.
It'll be, it'll be in your budget package, but we'll have it ready.
Yeah. Yeah.
For next meeting as well, which, you know, again, we'll we'll look at early January.
Alright, well, if there's nothing else, um, I make a motion to adjourn, and I second that, all those things.
There you go.
I.
Alright. Thanks, Deb.
We thank you all for coming out tonight.
Yeah.